Okay. I think my mic's on. Good morning. Welcome to the February 2 Oklahoma City Council meeting. We will begin this morning with Dr. Stephen Rummage, pastor of Quell Springs Baptist Church, providing the invocation, and then after the invocation, Councilman Stone Cypher will provide, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand, please?
Please join me as I pray. Lord, you have been our dwelling place in all generations. Before the mountains were brought forth, wherever you had formed the earth and the world, from everlasting to everlasting, you are God. God, we come into your presence today, and Lord, we ask your blessing on the city of Oklahoma City, on our mayor, on our city council, and Lord, on this meeting today. Father, we thank you for each person serving, and we pray, God, your wisdom for decisions to be made. We pray, God, your grace in our times of weakness, and Lord, we pray for your strength to guide us through. Thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness to us in these very difficult days in our city and our nation. And Lord God, I pray that your wisdom would guide each decision made today and in the days to come, for I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now call the meeting to order. First item, office of the mayor. We've got a presentation to make. Deborah McAuliffe and Steve Mason, would you please come to the podium? And I'm going to ask our city clerk to read the proclamation, and then after she reads the proclamation, if you'd like to make any comments, you're welcome to do that.
Whereas the arts enhance every aspect of life in Oklahoma City, contributing to economic development efforts, enriching our quality of life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the development of our youth. And whereas youth arts education helps to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of artistic endeavors and cross-cultural understanding. Whereas the local nonprofit arts industry has been devastated by the COVID-19 pandemic, experiencing a more than $20 million revenue loss and loss of nearly 1.5 million audience members in just an eight-month period. Yet they demonstrate its creativity and resiliency by continuing to offer programming in new ways that provides hope, joy, and connection. Whereas Allied Arts has served as the champion of central Oklahoma's cultural community and has infused nearly $79 million to enhance our city's quality of life since 1971. Allied Arts supports more than 40 cultural nonprofits annually, helping to fill the funding gap to ensure free and affordable programming for all, arts education in underserved schools, and healing arts for sick, disabled, and veteran populations. Whereas the month of February is recognized as Allied Arts Month by the city of Oklahoma City, local businesses, and nonprofits, and the community at large in recognition of the organization's vital support for our cultural community. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 to be Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City, and he calls upon citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community, and to especially encourage greater participation in the arts by all citizens.
Let's show our appreciation to Steve and Deborah. And please, any comments?
Hi, I'm Steve Mason, and I'm a volunteer, and I'm chairman of Allied Arts. Couple of things. First of all, we run an annual campaign. Last year, we raised 3.4 million, and the city, and the employees of the state of Oklahoma City was our largest workplace campaign. Thank you. Last summer, the city council trusted the Allied Arts with a $300,000 CDBG grant to serve low moderate families and artists, and we have been successful with that, and I want to thank you for trusting us. The arts agencies continue to struggle, but they pivoted. We're still waiting to have full live performances again, and we're still there, and we'll keep doing it. And then another note, one of my tenants is Community Care Partners, led by Jenny Bass Carl, which last year you all entrusted them to help distribute housing assistance, job training, utilities. It was successful. And the great news is, she thought she was done in December, but thanks to what I call the Second Cares Act, she lives for another day, and whatever support you'll give in that second process, thank you.
Continuing with the office of the mayor, I do have some sad information. We want to extend our condolences to the family of Walt Morris. Walt's a former city councilman, was a member of the council in the early 90s, a very successful businessman, and just had quite a few achievements. But among all the things Walt was able to accomplish, I think the fact that he and his wife served as foster parents for over, to over 360 children over 25 years is quite an accomplishment. And again, we, we want to extend our condolences to the family, his wife Bonnie, and their children, and other family members. Just a very great man, so. All right. I think that is it from the office of the mayor. I do want to make one request this morning to the council. We've got 25 items in the separate vote category. Some of them may take some length of time, so I would like to be as efficient as possible and before we start losing members of the council, to make sure we get to that point. So we'll try to, again, be as efficient as possible leading up to that, and then once we get through the votes, we can have as much fun and, and discussions as we'd like to. So. Let's see, we need to now receive the Journal of Council Proceedings.
Move the items.
Okay, thank you. Is there a sec? Thank you. And we will vote now. Okay. Now, that was to receive the journal, and the next item is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for the January 5th.
Move the item.
Okay. Will we get a, here we go. Yeah.
It was moved by Stone Cypher and seconded by Greiner.
Oh, yeah, it passed unanimously. Okay. Thank you. So the next item is the request for uncontested continuances. City manager, would you please let us know what they may be?
Sure. So there are several that are listed on the council agenda with PPAA to strike that item, item 8J in the council docket to strike that item, item 98A is in the council agenda to strike that item, and then item, I'm sorry, 9AA, A8, and then 9B has been withdrawn. So those are stricken. I don't have any other items that are stricken, but I did want to mention Amy Simpson is with us this morning. She is our new city clerk. Francis will be with us for a few more weeks, and I really appreciate all the work that Francis has done, and we'll recognize her later, but I did want to just mention that that Amy is sitting up here today to be able to sit alongside of Francis as she goes through this. Amy has been our purchasing agent for the last 10 years and has been with the city for 27 years, and I really appreciate her service and, and the fact that she's here. But I just wanted to recognize her being on here today so that everyone understood why she's sitting up here on council with us. And that's all the items that we have.
Okay, thank you. And in the area of revocable permits, it doesn't look like we have any, so we will now recess the council meeting, and we will convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Okay, it's, the item's been moved.
Second.
Second. And we are now ready to vote. And it's approved unanimously. Thank you. So now we adjourn the OC MFA and now convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Have four items.
Move the items.
Thank you. Please vote. And that's approved unanimously. Now we adjourn the OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and all we have are the claims and payroll, but I would appreciate a, a vote on that.
Move the claims and payroll.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's vote. And that's approved unanimously. Okay, now we will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene as the city council with the consent docket. Are there any items that people would like to, that members of the council would like to vote on separately? Were there any questions?
Vice Mayor, we do have one presentation that's on for AJ, so I just wanted to mention that one.
Yeah, please. Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'd like to hear a little bit more, not for a separate vote, but 7P, the, this grant application.
Which one was that, James? I couldn't hear you.
7P, as in Paul.
Thank you.
Oh, I see. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other items?
AO.
AO. Okay. All right. Okay. Craig, would you like to do your presentation first, and then we'll move to these items afterwards?
Yes, so. Kim Willmuss is here with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, just to do, provide a quick introduction of our speaker of, this is on an allocation of GOAL funds, and it's on. So I'd like Kim to introduce this project.
Good morning. I'm Kim Willmuss of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, here to introduce Mr. Art Lazlo for, he is the president of IDEXX Energy, and that is the parent company of the local company Corkin Incorporated. Can't hear me?
Hold on, so we can't?
Okay. Okay, can you hear me now?
That sounds like it now.
There we go. Oh goodness, sorry.
Thank you.
Good morning, Kim Willmuss with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber, here to introduce Mr. Art Lazlo, who is president of IDEXX Energy. That is the parent company of the local company here, Corkin Incorporated. We're pleased to work with them on their company consolidation and expansion of their local Oklahoma City project, is 120 new jobs here in the Oklahoma City area, and I would like to go ahead and bring him up here. All right.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. If we can go to the next slide, as Kim said, I'm the president of IDEXX Advantage Flow Solutions, which is a part of IDEXX Energy. Ultimately, two of the businesses that I'm responsible for is Corkin Incorporated, which is here in Oklahoma City. Give you a little bit of background. Corkin has been here in Oklahoma City since 1924. The other business that I'll reference is Liquid Controls Corporation, which is based just outside of Chicago in Lake Bluff, Illinois, which has been there around 60 years. Combined, we have over 250 employees as part of IDEXX Corporation, which is based out of Chicago. Though we are spoken about in oil and gas, I would argue that we're referencing to that because of the fact that we move and measure petroleum-based fluids. What we do is we're a manufacturer of equipment. We manufacture pumps, we manufacture compressors, we manufacture meters that you'd see very downstream. We don't really play near the wellhead, so when we see things going on that's affected by oil pricing and the like, it doesn't have much of an impact. I think what we're proud to boast is we can add some diversification as well, as we are looking at relocating and expanding our operations here in Oklahoma City by relocating the Liquid Controls business from Chicago to here in Oklahoma City. Next slide, please. As I said, this talks a little bit about it. The picture here is our new facility, if you've driven by I-35 in Britton Road, it's a new facility that was constructed in 2019, and we opened it and moved in, in early 2020. That currently houses our Corkin manufacturing operations. We moved from 36 in Portland to this beautiful new facility with the idea of expanding, and what we've ended up deciding to do was to expand this and make this our headquarters here in Oklahoma City, ultimately, again, relocating, making the decision to relocate the Liquid Controls manufacturing operations to here in Oklahoma City. Go to the next slide, please. Before making the final decision for Oklahoma City, we did look at a variety of other geographic regions, Chicago, where we're currently located with the Liquid Controls facility. We did look at Dallas and Houston, ultimately looking at the energy corridor, if you will, within the United States, but ultimately chose Oklahoma City. So why Oklahoma City? Obviously, a very attractive cost of doing business. We've been here for 96 years and have had great success in the city. And again, the quality of life that we believe the city offers to not just our existing employees, but folks that either will hire or will potentially move here as a part of the new jobs that will be created from this project. Next slide, please. So how will, how will our firm affect this? As we talked about, 120 new jobs over the next five years. It's roughly about 100 manufacturing jobs and around 20 professional jobs, anything from engineering, finance, obviously executive-type roles. What we are offering is roughly an average of about $50,000 plus benefits and programs. Our benefits, medical, dental, vision, short-term, long-term disability, 401K, as well as EAP. Next slide, please. I do want to talk about not just what we do inside the operations, but what do we do within the community in which we live and work. And we've partnered with two great local organizations, Positive Tomorrow's, which I believe most folks are familiar with, as well as the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma. In the last four years, we've donated close to $50,000, and obviously prior to COVID, we've donated more than 400 hours, and we still are financially supporting those organizations even in COVID, but are looking for creative ways, obviously, to, to remain safe and figure out how to volunteer once things begin to open back up. IDEXX Corporation, which is our parent corporation, they do have a foundation that I was actually proud to be a, one of the founders of and the president of for a number of years. We partner with them in providing those funds that we can bring back into the local Oklahoma City area. Lastly, here, just a picture of our former facility where we were since 1963. Prior to 1963, Corkin was actually located in Bricktown in 1924. Lake Bluff facility there that you see in the center, and then ultimately consolidating those two organizations into our new facility, as I mentioned, on I-35 in Britton Road. May I take any questions?
Yes, I have a, oh, did, go ahead. Okay. Okay, I'll go. So I don't know anything about this field of work. When you say you're looking into diversification away from just oil and gas, like what does that mean for sort of the pumps business?
Sure. So when I say we're, we're downstream, if you think of oil and gas, you've got upstream, midstream, downstream, we're extremely downstream. Where you'll find our products are at Costco, U-Hauls, Ace Hardware's, these are pumps that when you go and fill your gas grill with propane, you're most likely using one of our pumps in that process. Our pumps, as well as our meters, are also used on jet fueling trucks. So at regional, as well as international-based airports, you'll see the fueling trucks that come up and obviously fuel the planes. Our metering systems, which are Liquid Controls, as well as the pumps, are Corkin-related, so you'll see that aspect as well. We do, it's all not just within petroleum-based fluids. There's a lot of what we call refined fuels, which is everything from, could be oil, cooking oil that's delivered to a McDonald's that's in a truck. It's got to be pumped and ultimately measured to know that custody transfer so they know what to charge people. So it's a variety of different things, but we tend to be talked about in oil and gas because the majority of how people use the products we manufacture happen to be in that space.
And then my second question is something that I've just committed myself to asking every business that comes to us for discussion of their GOAL bonds, is do you have, especially knowing that Oklahoma incarcerates so many people, and we have a lot of people working on reentry, do you all have any barriers on hiring people with a felony history, a history of imprisonment at all?
I apologize, I couldn't hear the question clearly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I've, I've just, I've committed myself to asking this question for every business that comes to us for GOAL funding. Because Oklahoma has such a high incarceration rate and a lot of people reentering into our community, do you all have any barriers for hiring people with a felony or history of imprisonment?
Sure. So obviously, all, all folks that, that come and apply, we do put through a background check, and our corporate policies do dictate some things that, that we look at. I think it depends on what it is specifically, and it's handled on a case-by-case basis. So again, I wouldn't say that there's set barriers, but obviously, all things would be considered, and I think, again, case-by-case basis that we'd look at an applicant. and I think, again, case-by-case basis that we'd look at an applicant.
Can you, do you know, or would you be able to provide us any information on kind of what the things that wouldn't allow someone to be hired would be? And like, what's the difference between one type of history and another?
Yeah, I think felony would be one barrier to hiring. But again, below that, if we're talking misdemeanors and things, I think it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to thank you for choosing Oklahoma City as your headquarters. I also wanted to thank you for the expansion, but mostly, I want to thank you for 120 new jobs. And in this transition period, as you make your headquarters in Oklahoma City, anything we can do to help, please call.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, again, thanks.
Yes. I think we want to reemphasize and ask that question again. So do you hire those who have felonies with this company?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Second question, as far as the employment opportunities that can exist for our communities, what, what plans do you have as far as these jobs are concerned to possibly look in, not to possibly, but to look into the communities as far as employment for these positions that will be provided in this area?
Sure. So overall, the 120 jobs that are here, we're actually only relocating approximately five or six individuals from Chicago. So the bulk of the jobs will be, again, we'll, we'll open up application. We're hoping to obviously get the majority of folks from, from Oklahoma City. One of the other things I wanted to talk about is we are looking at partnering with organizations, whether it's local schools or technical schools, et cetera, as well as if there's any suggestions from the council of other organizations that we work within, we're happy to do that. We, we are also, I want to talk about something we're very proud of, which is our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council, which is made up of employees within our organization. We currently have roughly about 18% female employees within the facility, as well as a third minority. And our goal is to obviously increase that. So we're, we're looking to, to obviously work within the community and obviously hire as many as possible from within Oklahoma City.
And my, my next question is, I'm curious to know why this is my first time actually hearing about this being brought to my attention with it being in the ward that I serve. I'm, I'm very disturbed by that because the only reason I question that is because of the fact that these are conversations that I would have loved to have prior to us meeting today for us to really talk about some of those, the ways that even our resources that are within the ward can assist in future as far as these jobs are concerned and other companies that may benefit from your services that we obviously know and can, can, could connect as well. So I'm, I'm not sure if, if that's a city manager thing, if that's the finance director thing, if that's the alliance thing, or if that is the Economic Development Office. But I'm not, I'm very confused by that.
Yeah, typically, typically, we see these as community-wide projects, the economic development projects, not just within a ward, even though they may locate an award. And usually, what we do is we'll vet those through a process.
Sorry, let me stop you right there. And the only reason I'm going to pause you there is because we've had plenty of other projects where the project actually goes through that council person to just at least give them the courtesy that something is coming as far as these jobs are concerned and as far as the development itself. While I understand this development is already here, it's working, the courtesy could have been given for at least the person that represents that area to understand that this is, this is what is coming for us to consider. And especially with 120 jobs coming to that particular area of our community, while it is a city thing, yes, but it is also very specific to a certain area of our community as well.
Yeah.
So that is why I, I, I'm not pleased with not getting the information or at least, again, the courtesy of saying, this is what is coming and we would just like you to know about it as we put this on the council agenda for others to look at, because I give the example of Barquet. Didn't we give them some GOAL bond money? Yes, we did?
No, no, it was tip, it was tip, actually, I'm sorry.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. Please forgive me for that. But either way, it was a project that used money that we have. And the courtesy was given for at least us to say, this is coming in your area. We just want you to be aware.
Yeah.
That this is, is going to be in front of you in the future. So I would again ask that we look at not doing that in the future.
Sure. No, I understand that. Also, I would mention that, so these go through and they're vetted through the Economic Development Trust. Economic Development Trust reviews these and then brings these forward to the council. This is an authorization for an allocation of funding. So we've authorized the allocation of the funding. We will still come back with another item that will come through Economic Development Trust and back to the council with an economic development agreement. So there'll be another item that comes back to the council.
Okay, then I'll go back to the KIVA program, because didn't that go through the Economic Development Trust? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so that was brought to at least the council members for them to at least understand that this was coming in front of them before it happened. So again, just some type of information would, would be very efficient.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Lazlo, again, thank you for being here with us this morning. This is, this item is just for introduction at this time. It'll come back on February 16th. A comment I'd like to make, and if you agree with it, that's great. I think one of the benefits we may see in, in terms of this COVID and people now working remotely greater, more often, I think the, the feeling, for example, if anything's related, I'm going to use the example of oil and gas, they always need to consider Houston, which is thought of as the oil and gas capital of, of the United States. There's others areas throughout the country that have specializations of certain types of businesses. But I think that's not as great now. Companies realize they can operate globally, you know, from wherever they may be located. And to be headquartered, for example, in Houston is not as important, I hope, as it used to be, for example. And again, there are other industries with, that have special areas like the Silicon Valley in California. You know, if you're a high-tech company, it's thought that you need to be there. I don't think that's the case anymore, or it's not as strong of a case. So I hope you and, and other businesses begin to recognize the benefits that you identified with coming to Oklahoma City. And we can see more jobs coming to Oklahoma City. Because I think, well, I know I do, and I'm sure all the members up here believe, that it's a great city and we'll do, as Councilman Stonecifer said, we'll do everything we can to assist you. So please don't hesitate to call. And again, thank you for choosing Oklahoma City and thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Next item we have is P, item P, Councilman Cooper asked for it.
Yes, Councilman Cooper, would you please kind of go over that? And then we'll bring someone here to discuss that.
Yes, thank you.
Or introduce that, I mean.
Yeah, I am just really interested in hearing a little bit more about this application we are submitting for, for grant funding for bicycle and pedestrian count program. So take it away, please, Jeff.
All right. Sorry. Jeff Butler, Planning Director, yeah, this is a grant that we are applying for through the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office. We actually applied and received a grant from them last year to do a few things to promote awareness of bicycle and pedestrian safety. And this year, we'd like to apply for $75,000 to help us to get a bicycle and pedestrian count program established. So to acquire the equipment that we need. As you all know, we have a kind of a fledgling network that we'll be building out over the next few years. We'll be seeing more bike lanes and sidewalks spreading out this, this coming year and the next couple of years. And so we'd like to be able to count those, the usage rates for those facilities so that we can plan accordingly and, and keep enhancing safety for those.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that work. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But question, when would we expect to hear back about that application?
It won't be for a while, actually. There, it's kind of a, we'll, we'll be submitting the application here in February. But the process that they go through is a little bit lengthy. And so it won't be till the fall, actually, till we hear back. But we, we, we think our chances are good.
Thank you.
Jeff, when, when we do hear back, it sounds like Councilwoman Hammond has an interest in hearing that, and I definitely do as well, so thank you.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Okay, Councilwoman Nice, your item again was?
A.O.
A.O., yes, got it, right here. Thank you.
A.O., thank you. I know, that's right here. I was looking for it, there it is. I know Mr. Todd is here to, if you would, just help me with this because we have finally gotten almost to where we can start. Well, now it's construction time, so I think we're very excited. And before you begin, I just want to say I passed by Lincoln in 36 today and the whole frame for the homeland is up. So this is, this area right behind it is going to bring so much life and just movement and wellness to this area, so we're excited about it.
David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. So as Councilwoman Nice said, this is our third wellness center within the MAPS 3 program. Really happy to be bringing that to you today. We had 10 bidders on this project, which is fantastic. They were all very competitive and very close. Were able to award this one to W.L. McNatt. W.L. McNatt built the first two wellness centers. So they certainly know what we're doing as far as, as wellness centers. So we're able to award the alternates that are listed, 1, 6, 7, and 10, and still remain under budget. So we're very, very happy and, and excited about getting this going.
Thank you, and we're working towards the other alternates as well. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some more of those in as well.
Right. What we discussed was oftentimes, if we can't get the alternates at bid time within the budget, we do have some contingency, and if there's some contingency left at the end, we're able to award those at, at a later time, and that's what we'll certainly try to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, so I believe that's all. I think we are now ready to vote.
I would like a motion to approve the consent docket.
Thank you, Mark. It's, it's been seconded. All right, everyone, when it comes up, we'll vote. And it's approved seven to two. Well. Yeah. Unanimous, I'm sorry. I apologize. It was approved unanimously. Okay. Well, you see, when you start getting old, your eyesight is just not the same as it used to be. Now let's move to the consent docket. I'm sorry, concurrent docket. Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, but I think we've got, do we have a present? Okay, no presentation. All right, well, great. Any discussion? All right, we'll vote. And it's approved unanimously. Now, items requiring separate votes. Can we just go in order even though we've got a presentation? Okay, so the first item, item A1, Councilwoman Nice, it's in Ward 7?
Yes, thank you so much. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval for 100 Northwest, 121st Street, going from R1 single-family to I1 light industrial. And the purpose is to permit development of a warehouse space for plumbing service, and there were no protests. Ms. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak?
No one signed up.
Okay. With that, I will move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We will now vote. It's approved unanimously. The next item is item A2, again, Ward 7?
Yes, thank you. This is also an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval for PC 10706, 3301 South Bryan Avenue, from R4 General Residential District to RMH2 Manufactured Mobile Home Park. And the purpose is to permit the expansion of an existing manufactured mobile home community. And there were no protests and no one.
I'll send the applicant here if you have any questions.
We do have the applicant here. If there are any questions for the applicant. Hearing none. Has anyone else signed up to speak? Okay, I will ask that we approve this application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We will now vote. It's approved unanimously. The next item, A3, is in Ward 2?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Is the applicant present? Oh, please.
Good morning, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. This is a, really a downzoning. We're going in with a straight R1 zoning for single-family detached homes on that street.
Yeah, thank you for that. I know that the folk nearby are big fans of that sort of single-family development. So with that, I would move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and we'll vote.
1:22.
It's approved unanimously.
1:22. 1:22.
Next item, again, Ward 2?
Yes, is the applicant and/or their representative here?
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application to convert what is an O2 dental office to a C1 vet clinic. The, the C1 district is intended to be a light commercial district that does not include uses that would generate traffic and create impacts to a residential neighborhood. So the C1 office, the C1 district fits perfectly for a vet clinic and serves as a nice transition from the heavier commercial along May as you go east towards residential. Staff recommended approval. It also comes to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval by Planning Commission.
How were the neighbor, neighbors with this, this conversation? Did you hear anything from them?
No, no, no protest was received.
Okay. Well, with that, then, I would move for approval.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. We'll vote. And it's approved unanimously. Next item is item number A5, Ward 3? Councilwoman McAtee?
Yes, is the applicant present? What I'd like to do is have the applicant present what he would like to do. And then we'll turn it for some questions. Do we have some people that have signed up? Okay, well, let's go with the applicant in presenting, if you would.
Sure. Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, also with me is Kendall Dillon, who's a civil engineer for this project. So this is a PUD for an R1 application for an R1 application. That you may recall, we had a similar application to our south that's along, JJ, could you scroll up just a bit and get to the aerial, please? There you go, so along Southwest 15th, the track that's undeveloped to the south of the subject track, we came through with a similar PUD last year, there was a lot of protest at that time, primarily because my client, in an effort to be overly transparent in visiting with the neighbors, explained to them that this product was a rent-to-own product, even though our PUD is R1, and the folks to our west are R1, and in fact, our PUD is more restrictive than their R1 because we have higher requirements for facade regulations, drainage, and all these other things, they did not like the fact that it was rent-to-own. We did our best to explain to them that that's really not an issue for the city to consider, the question is one of use and whether or not single-family is appropriate next to single-family. The council approved that application, and we then came forward with this application. There was a little bit of protest at the Planning Commission stage, but it was received favorably by Planning Commission, the only concern at Planning Commission was the interaction between the industrial to our north and the industrial to our west, so we did increase setbacks along the north and the west, required additional trees to be installed to mitigate that potential conflict. One of the problems that the neighbors are seeing in this area is one of drainage, if you look at the subject, you'll see all those, the area that are trees, that is a, that's the drainage channel, all of those trees are volunteer trees, those trees are creating problems with the water moving, what we are going to be able to do through the development of this application is channelize that, the channelization of the water should help the neighborhood to our west that is currently there by getting that water and moving. We take everyone's water, we don't put water on anyone else based upon topography, so the reason they're experiencing water is it's backing up within our site and bleeding over to theirs. By channelizing it, we're going to get that water and move it to where it's supposed to go and get it into the river. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Councilman, I hope that covered what you wanted me to cover.
Okay, what I'd like to have is Jeff Butler come forward for just a minute, because this facility, or this plot of land, joins some heavy industrial, and the Planning Commission looked at this in quite detail and made a determination that this was in conformance with the Oklahoma City plan, and I'd like Jeff to speak to that, if he would.
Yeah, Jeff Butler, Planning Director, so yeah, when this came to the Planning Commission, as Mr. Box said, has stated the kind of the main concerns, but the Plan, Plan OKC, the Conference of Plan, it indicates that the areas to the north, immediately to the north and immediately to the west of this site, they're classified as heavy industrial, but the site itself is not, it's just a kind of a normal urban area, and so the Planning Commission discussed kind of the pros and cons of allowing industrial versus residential development here, and the feeling was that a residential development would be a better fit for all concerned, for the neighbors to the south and the neighbors to the kind of the southwest. As Mr. Box said, there was concern about compatibility with the industrial uses to the north and to the west, and so there was a lot of time spent in the meeting, talking about the best way to address that, and at the end of the day, it involved eight-foot fence and some trees, buffer zone, trees in the buffer zone and also in the backyards, that would be additional requirements to deal with the noise and, you know, just kind of the views and other issues that might come with that.
Thank you, Jeff.
And those are included, those were additional TEs that were not originally there that you'll see in your staff report, TE 4 and 5 were additional requests of Planning Commission that we did agree to.
That's what I was getting ready to, as you mentioned in your introduction, that the specifications of this zoning would give the citizens who lived in this area more amenities than if it was just straight R1 zoning or some other type of zoning, would you just review that for our council again? Why is this going to be better for the citizenry than just a straight zoning or leaving it like it is?
Yeah, primarily, it's in the facade regulations, R1 zoning under the Oklahoma City Code right now doesn't require any masonry material, it doesn't have any requirements whatsoever, we have imposed upon this development a 95% requirement of masonry or stone, in addition, we've required additional landscaping above and beyond what the code requires, so we believe that this is not only compatible, but perhaps going to be of a quality that is something that I think the city should strive for.
And then another thing that the neighbors were quite concerned about was the drainage in this whole area, would you speak to what is going to be done with the drainage and what they can expect as the project moves forward?
Yeah, absolutely, so, again, the drainage problem that they're seeing is coming from the fact that this is all unimproved and all of those volunteer trees are blocking the flow of water, and so it's bleeding over to the west, again, all of the water from the surrounding properties come on to us, we don't put any water anywhere else, and so by channelizing that and creating what will likely be a series of detention ponds, we're going to move that water through like it's supposed to go and stop that blockage, which should then prevent what's happening now with the bleed over to the west.
Thank you, David. You've heard the information on this, there's more detail that we can cover, do any of the council have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, Larry, I think we're ready for your recommendation.
Being done, then, I vote that this be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, thank you, we will now vote. And it's approved unanimously. Thank you. Now, we have an item from Ward 7, this is item A6?
Yes, this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval for PUD 1787-122266, Woodland Hills Drive, it's going from PUD 275 to PUD 1787, and the purpose is for a recreational vehicle campground, and there were no protests, and I know, is the applicant present? I don't, I really don't have a lot of questions other than, are we, the neighbors, as far as the neighbors I know, there were a couple of conversations we had with them in regards to this development, so what were the final recommendations and exceptions for this application in regards to them?
Be happy to address that, my name is Bert Bellinger, 1 Northeast, 1 Northeast 1st Street, I represent the applicant, which is Simon's Development, they're here, and we did, after Planning Commission, we had some very, during Planning Commission process, we had some very fruitful discussion with the neighbors to the west, two people in particular, and we've been in conversation with them, we did agree to the technical evaluation, which included some beefing up of some language relating to side screening and fencing, and we believe that we've satisfied our neighbors, we actually are going to work proactively to improve some of the perimeter even outside of our property, so I think we've, and we continue to be committed to do that as we move through the development process, which is now underway on the site.
Thank you, Ms. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak?
No citizens.
You've got a bag of, trust me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, excuse me.
Yes, no, Mr. Washington, would you please give your name and address, please?
Yeah, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 7311 with a big old 1 on back of that one. You spoke to the residents, I don't recall you ever getting my permission or speaking to me as a political activist on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, you people continually come in here just to think that y'all can just squander over our properties and things as if we're nothing, man, is this part of the innovation district? Huh, this frivolous, totally watered-down, incompetently phrased project? Oh, we've come over here, we've talked to two people, really, is that all of us that's over there? No, this thing should not be approved, I know it's probably going to be, but Michael Washington is going to express his righteous indignation where it's concerned. You're not going to continue to tell me that you're going to destroy our properties and put land developers from other, outside our community coming in here and designing projects so-called, what was that again, what'd you call that then, Councilman? Let me see, what'd you call that? Oh, yeah, well, we talk to people, we love, we're going to clear up the language, noise, huh? We're not going to continue to tolerate you people jumping on our backs like we're nothing, like we're frivolous, like we're tired, like we're second-class citizens. Every doggone time you come up with a damn project, that's right, I'm fired up with it because like I said, I've been doing some movement and shaking and jingling even before I got here this morning, that's right, y'all are going to start hearing from me, I guess I'm going to start filing lawsuits on this councilwoman up here, let this bullshit keep going on around, I'm tired of y'all, man. And every time somebody come over to get something approved immediately, like it's nothing, huh, what do y'all want to put me on a damn slave plantation again? Every damn time something going on, man, I'm tired of this stuff here, man, we got to stand up, we got to have representation, or we have no representation at all, bottom line. I'll just, oh, who's the next person, oh, matter of fact, why don't you let me build an amusement park on that spot, but I need some money from y'all, why don't y'all approve that money from me that you got back in your rainy day funds and all that? Huh, you there for me? I'm tired of this stuff here, man, we got to stand up and wake up, ladies, they got to quit coming over here, moving us out, putting us in damn apartment buildings on Sixth Street, that's when you let everybody can see what's going on over there. It's got to end, man, it's got to end, and I'm not going to continue to tolerate it. If I have to independently on my own file some lawsuit in the district code of Oklahoma County in federal courts, I will obviously do that, because we as citizens have a right to be heard and to be protected with our property on the northeast side of Oklahoma City and properties and privileges, thank y'all very much, have a good day.
Thank you, okay.
Before we approve this application, let me just say, you may want to do some research on where you're protesting, this area is specifically not in, you're not allowed to, Vice Mayor, we don't need him to speak because I am moving this, no, I didn't ask you to speak, you can sit, thank you. This particular application, again, is nowhere close to any of the comments we've just heard, again, we are asking for this particular, I have spoken to the applicant, I have spoken to the neighbors, so it's not as if people have not been having conversations dealing with it, I don't have to speak to you, no, I do not, and therefore, we will not address that or this conversation because this has nothing to do with people who think they have the vote pertaining to this particular development, so with that, I move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we will vote now. Mr. Washington, please. Okay, vote. It's approved unanimously. So, the next item is A7, Ward 1.
Jeff, has anybody signed up for this?
The applicant is present, Bob Myers.
Is that it?
No citizens.
Okay, well, this is a, this is an application for a storage unit out on Morgan Road, there were some protests, I've talked to a few of them, and I think that most of the concerns are already addressed in the PUD as far as, you know, eyesore, traffic, outdoor storage, all of those things, but do you have anything to add?
No, I'm Bob Myers, Myers Management Group, representing myself, so.
Thank you, okay.
All right. Well, if nobody has any questions, I will move for approval.
Okay, thank you, it's been moved?
Second.
Second, we will now vote. And it's approved unanimously. Okay, item A8 is stricken, I believe. Okay, thank you. That moves us to item A9, Ward 8.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, this is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone 9421 Northwest 122nd Street from AA Agricultural to PUD 1791, it came before the Planning Commission on December 20th and was approved, I'm not aware of any protest, and I don't think there's anybody here today, so I will move for its approval, please.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there a second? Okay, second, we will now vote. It's approved unanimously. Item A10, Ward 1.
Yeah, this is a, it's got a straight zoning, single-family residential, and they're rezoning it to a PUD, I have no protest that I'm aware of, it's already surrounded by either agriculture or R1, had unanimous Planning Commission approval, and I'll move for approval.
Thank you, it's been moved?
Second.
Second, we will now vote. And it's approved unanimously. Next item, item A11, Ward 4.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Francis, has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, sir, no one.
Thank you, this is a small mixed-use development out around 74th and Anderson, received unanimous approval at the Planning Commission, so unless anyone has any questions, I'd move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded, we'll vote. And it's approved unanimously. Item A12, Ward 7?
Yes, this is PUD 1785-1180, Northwestern Avenue, from R2 Medium Low to PUD 1795, PUD, is applicant present?
No one signed up, Council.
No one signed up? Thank you.
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive.
Please, if you don't mind, explain, I'm just curious as far as the communication with the neighbors, because I believe we talked about this, and you may have to refresh my memory because 2020 was so long ago, so I'm just curious, I'm just curious as far as the conversation as the neighbors and the neighborhood is concerned, because like I said, if you didn't hear me, I was saying I believe we talked about this, and there was a concern as far as me asking that we communicate with the neighborhood to ensure they were safe with this.
So, I'm sorry if I cut you off, so, in 2020, there was a different application and a different project, that project went away, we withdrew the application, months later, a, would you like me to shut the door? Months later, a new developer in a different project came, we did visit with Kamal Pennington, the Planning Commission member prior to planning, and asked him, you know, do you think we should have a neighborhood meeting, it was his belief, based upon what we had proposed, that there was support for this, but we certainly offered that and told him to tell anybody, given my cellphone, if we need to meet anytime, we will. We're going from a PUD that allows for R2 with very little regulations as it relates to amenities and facade treatment, here, we're seeking a multifamily in which we have intentionally kind of shoved the units away from the residential, we've intentionally prohibited access onto 117th, so that all of our traffic will not impact the neighborhood, but will rather be along Western, which as you know is, you know, four-lane and moves a lot of traffic, because of that drainage area, it actually provides a nice opportunity for us to have walking trails and be a great distance away from the existing neighborhood to the east, these units and this development will actually force the residences that will be here further away from the residences that would be allowed under the current here further away from the residences that would be allowed under the current zoning. We have, you know, space for playground. Once we, we get into it and see exactly what the drainage issue will be, perhaps additional amenities will be offered, but we do offer more amenities than would otherwise be realized today under the current PUD.
I guess my, my second question would be, as I'm looking at the, the trails and, and a lot of the areas and amenities, will this be gated, a gated community, or will neighbors in the surrounding area be able to access maybe the walking trails?
It, it will be gated, but let us see if there's a way that we can still allow access to, to the walking trails. You know, most apartments now are gated, but, you know, when I drive, there, most of them are always open. But let me see if there's not a way through the common area or otherwise to find a way to connect the walking trails. Perhaps it's along 117th Street.
Okay, and if you don't mind, I'm, I'm going to, go ahead and allow this, well, today, but I want to continue to keep us engaged, at least with the neighbors, as we go through this process, just for, just that, that moral support from the community, and we'll find out who, which exact neighbor we need to talk to as far as the representative for the Neighborhood Association. But I just want to make sure we continue to keep them updated on this particular development, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. In fact, to that, to that point, Councilwoman, a specific plan is required, so it will require us to go back to a public hearing in front of Planning Commission before we can have any building permit issued.
Okay, that's perfect. All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move, move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, we will now vote. And it's approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is A13, Ward 7.
Yes, this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, S.P.U.D. 1264. This is 11712 North I-35 Service Row from Spud 610 to Spud 1264, and this is to request a mixed-use, commercial and industrial use. And there was a protest for this development. Is there anyone that signed up to speak? And I, I do understand this is using an existing area for potential new structures with the addition of a couple of, of signs. So with that, I will move for approval.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, we will now vote. And it's approved unanimously. Next item, A14, Ward 2.
Yes, is the applicant or their representative present? I thought so. Yeah, would you mind telling us a little bit about this project, and then I think we have maybe some amendments to add? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who's also here with us today. So this is a bit of unusual one. It's zoned C3 today, and it's, it's a former gas station site. We are seeking to get a, an S.P.U.D. approved that would allow for a car sales. There is, it's interesting, in C3, if you are across an arterial from a residential district, a special permit is not allowed for a car lot. Well, of course, we are across from a residential district, however, that residential district is Northwest Class and High School. Certainly, the codes prohibition from being across from R1 is intended to be, to keep a single-family neighborhood from this type of use. We don't have that here. So what we've done is essentially downzone it by taking out most of the uses that would be allowed under C3 and really tailoring it to the auto sales. It is recommended for approval by staff and Planning Commission, but in conversation with the councilman, there were a couple items that he would like us to add that we have agreed to. We will be adding landscaping planters along 27th and May. The building additionally will receive a fresh coat of paint and just some general upgrade. My client doesn't have control of it yet, and of course, it, it's not the best-looking building today, and he is aware that in order for him to be successful, he's going to have to do something to rehab that. He just, of course, needs this approval where he can do so. And we did talk about sidewalks. The code will require us to have sidewalks along the arterial and 27th, which we agree to. So those are the, the additional items, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So you say 27th, but you mean 28th, right?
Uh, yes, I believe so, my apologies.
No, it's fine, just making sure.
28th, you are correct.
Okay. Yes, and I really appreciate you and your client with those particular amenities, only because 27th, as we talked about, really has my attention, because that's going to be a street that the city's planning department is prioritizing for walkability, and I think maybe even some bike infrastructure, but the kids who, who make their way from east of May Avenue to Kaiser, like, who cross through the neighborhood just behind this development, they're going to be using 27th as their sort of walk-through to Kaiser. And so 27th and 30th are both streets that I'm working to make sure are more pedestrian-friendly for those kids and their families. Residents have asked me that, and I, I am with them. So making sure that any new development that's close to 30th and 27th here, making sure that it helps provide safe passage for those kids is important. So I really appreciate you, you working with me on that. So do I need to pass with an amendment? How do I, what's the?
Yeah, so there needs to be an amendment to add the requirement for landscaping planters along May and 28th.
So I'd like to make an, a motion to move the amendment with the landscaping along 28th and May Avenue, please.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second? It's okay, moved and seconded, we'll vote on the amendment. This is the amendment. And it's approved unanimously.
And then I'd like to make a motion to move the item as amended, please.
Okay. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
And it's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Ward 5. I will discuss this one if, if no one has any objections. It's a Spud 1267 located at 1324 Southwest 89th, from Spud 766 to Spud 1267. It's to provide for marijuana dispensary and a spa. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, well then I will move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we'll vote. And it's approved unanimously. Okay, item A16, Ward 3.
Is the applicant present?
Good morning. Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a small, a little bit less than five-acre tract, about mid-mile south of Northwest 10th on the east side of Cemetery. This Spud is a duplex community, and it is in conformance with the comp plan, staff recommended approval, unanimous approval at Planning Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Seeing no objections, and after that, I move for approval.
Been moved and seconded. We'll vote. And it's approved unanimously. Next item, A17, Ward 2. Bob?
Bob Teener, Development Services Director. The applicant requested just a few minutes ago to defer this for two weeks.
Oh, okay.
So he's, he had to leave.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to you. Then I'd like to go ahead and move to defer for two weeks, please.
It's been moved and seconded to defer for two weeks. We will now vote. And the motion to defer has been approved unanimously. Next item, A18, Spud 1271, located at 16191 Drywater Drive. This is east of Pennsylvania, close to 164th Street. A change in status from AA Agriculture to a Spud, and it looks like they're going to build four homes on this piece of property, residential. No protest, it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, and so I will move for approval. It's been moved and seconded, we will now vote. It's approved unanimously. Another item for Ward 5, A19, Spud 1273, located at 7700 South Pennsylvania, formerly a private fitness center, gymnasium, moving to a Spud. I do have one question, Bob, if I may. Originally, I see that a sidewalk was going to be provided along South Pennsylvania, and that was stricken. Is that because there's an existing sidewalk on the facility?
That's correct.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay, thank you. With that in mind, there's no one signed up, is there, Francis? Okay. I will move for approval. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. It's approved unanimously. Item A20, Ward 6.
Yes, thank you. This is a property at 2300 Southwest 28th Street, and it's being rezoned from R2 to a Spud to allow multifamily development, and there was no protest, and it was recommended unanimously for approval from the Planning Commission, subject to the technical evaluation, so I will also move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded, we will now vote. It's approved unanimously. Next item is item number B, that's been withdrawn. Next item, item C.
This item was introduced at the last meeting, and it's on for final hearing. Is it making a change to the project plan or project area for the Innovation District? And it's just to include the Brockway Center, and so that was introduced last week.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We do need to have a vote, so would someone please make a motion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, moved and seconded. And it's approved unanimously. Next item, item D.
So this was an ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting. This is just a public hearing, the second meeting of the public hearing, so we won't have to have a vote on this. It's an item that was changing the age limit on sale, purchase of tobacco and vaping products, and is just to get us in line with state law, the changes in state law.
Thank you, City Manager. So, any comments, questions? All right. No votes required. Next item, item...
Make sure you ask if there's anyone to sign up to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you. Is there anyone who signed up to speak on this item, Francis? Thank you. E, item E, I think we have a presentation on this one.
Yes, sir. Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, is here to explain this and introduce this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilor, Eric Winger, Public Works Director, Oklahoma City. We have a new introduction of ordinance change for Chapter 32 for your consideration today. And this is the introduction, so we'll be back to the council two additional times. And it is coming from the Traffic Commission, recommended by the Commission on January 22nd, and it relates to parking-protected bike lanes. So as we continue to complete bike lane infrastructure improvements throughout the city, Planning and Public Works are working very closely together on some new bike lane details, and one of those details is the parking-separated bike lane, where it is different than what you've seen in many parts of Oklahoma City. So instead of the bike lane being outside of the parking, the bike lane is actually inside the parking, so the bike lane is next to the curb, and then the parking is outside of the bike lane. There are some other cities that are starting to promote this. I believe Tulsa, Oklahoma, has some in their downtown area, and with the adoption of this ordinance, it will allow us to do the same. The ordinance is going to change three different sections of Chapter 32. They're listed in your memo, it's 32484, 3293, and then also 32314. It really makes four changes in those three different sections. 484 is going to prohibit motor vehicles from accessing the bike lanes for parking, turning, or passing. It's also going to allow disabled vehicles to park adjacent to that curb if necessary on top of the bike lane, if it's a disabled vehicle, for up to two hours. The last one is, is that a bike lane that is a parking-protected configuration, you can provide for drop-off and pickup, very limited drop-off and pickup of vehicles, picking up somebody from the edge of the curb. It's also going to add, and this is the most significant portion of the change in Chapter 32, there's a current restriction that when parallel parking is provided, that the wheels of the parallel-parked vehicle cannot exceed 18 inches from the curb where they're subject to a citation. So we're going to be making that change in 32314, where the 18 inches is clarified, that if a parking-protected bike lane is in place, it has to be 18 inches within that parking that is now separated away from the curb. The bike lane becomes the new curb line, and so this cleans up Chapter 32 to allow us to proceed with this type of detail on, on potential bike infrastructure projects, either through Better Streets or through our bond issue or other projects. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions today that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Winger? Eric?
Eric, thank you for bringing this forward. My follow-up would be, when it comes to the amendments for the disability vehicles and the drop-offs, are those, are we kind of borrowing those best practices from other cities? Like, is that how they handle these sorts of ordinances that relate to bike infrastructure when it's alongside the parking? Is that how they handle those sort of vehicles and drop-offs?
So I don't know specifically how Tulsa is doing theirs. We did work very closely with Municipal Councilor's Office, also Oklahoma City Police Department, in making sure that we could write it in a way for Oklahoma City ordinances to be enforceable, but to also continue to provide some of the same things that the ordinances currently allow, which would be for either disabled vehicles, the distance from curb. We've tried to make it work best for the Oklahoma City ordinances, but I can't answer if it's similar to other cities.
Is there any way we can find out over the course of, because I think that we're just introducing this today?
Right? I'd be happy to bring that back to you, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Eric. Very good report. This is being introduced, so we will need a vote.
Move approval.
Been moved? Is there a second? We will now vote. We will now vote. It's approved unanimously. Item F is a public hearing, so I don't believe there's a vote. But any questions, or has anyone signed up? Francis?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
I will say, as we're looking at this, and I'm reading and understanding what this is defined to do, in my opinion, it's a little premature for us to do this when we haven't secured any development for either corner. But it is a public hearing, so I'm letting my voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We will now move to item 10A, Claims Recommended For Approval. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the claims.
Okay. Second? Is there a second? Thank you. We will now vote. It's approved unanimously. I do not believe we have any items for executive session. Is that okay? Good. That comes to item 11, Items From Council. Councilman Cooper, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you. I know next week is our budget workshop, I'm to understand. And with that, I just wanted to read from a New York Times article, which appeared yesterday, titled "The Economy Is Improving Faster Than Expected, The U.S. Budget Office Says." This is from reporter Jim Tankersley with the New York Times. Quote, "The American economy will return to its pre-pandemic size by the middle of this year, even if Congress does not approve any more federal aid for the recovery. But it will be years before everyone thrown off the job by the pandemic is able to return to work, the Congressional Budget Office projected Monday. The new projections from the Office, which is nonpartisan and issues regular budgetary and economic forecasts, are an improvement from the Office's forecast last summer. Officials told reporters on Monday that the brightening outlook was the result of large sectors of the economy adapting better and more rapidly to the pandemic than originally expected. They also reflected increased growth from the $900 billion economic aid package that Congress passed in November, which included $600 direct checks to individuals and more generous unemployment benefits. The Budget Office now expects the unemployment rate to fall to 5.3% at the end of the year, down from an 8.4% projection last July. The economy is expected to grow 3.7% for the year, after recording a much smaller contraction in 2020 than the Budget Office initially expected. The rosier projections are likely to inject even more debate into the discussions over whether to pass President Biden's $1.9 trillion economic rescue package. It could embolden Republicans to have pushed back against Mr. Biden to scale the plan down significantly, saying the economy does not need so much additional federal support, and that another big package could, quote, "overheat" the economy. But the report shows little risk of that happening. The economy is projected to remain below potential levels until 2025 on its current path." One more time. "The economy is projected to remain below potential levels until 2025 on its current path, and big economic risks remain. The number of employed Americans will not repeat, will not return to its pre-pandemic levels until 2024, officials predicted, reflecting the prolonged difficulties of shaking off the virus and returning to full levels of economic activity. The Federal Reserve Chair Jerome Powell warned last week that the economy was, quote, "a long way from a full recovery," end quote, "with millions still out of work and many small businesses facing pressure." Budget officials said the rebound in growth and employment could significantly be accelerated if public health authorities were able to more rapidly deploy Corona vaccines across the population. As it stands, the Budget Office sees little evidence of growth running hot enough in the years to come to spur a rapid increase in inflation. It forecasts inflation levels below the Federal Reserve's target of 2% for years to come, even with the Fed holding interest rates near zero. Other independent forecasts, including one from the Brookings Institute last week, have projected that another dose of economic aid, like the $1.9 trillion package Mr. Biden has proposed, would help the economy grow more rapidly, topping its pre-pandemic path by year's end." That's the end of that article. I would remind everyone that I just quoted from a nonpartisan body. I serve on a nonpartisan body, which is why I'm referencing that particular source of information. I remember just a few weeks ago when someone was walking us through the history of the city jail and this building, the buildings built during the Depression. We had a governor at the time who rejected funding, relief funding, from our federal government. Rejected it, turned it away during the Great Depression. Can you imagine? You don't have to imagine, because that's been the world we've been living in in so many ways for the last year of this pandemic. I am so thankful to Congress over the previous several months for the economic relief they have provided. But we have to go as far as we can to meet this moment. I would remind this council that as the Congress and this council approved economic relief to our small businesses and our communities over the last year, we have to keep going back to do amendments, because our music venues, just venues generally, had found themselves out. We still have businesses in this community that have found themselves just outside of the framework of the economic relief packages that Congress and this council have passed. And we cannot, we must not take our foot off of the accelerator right now. We must not. We must treat this moment for what it really is, and as I have described it previously, which is 9/11 meets the Great Depression meets World War II. And when I made those comments last spring, when I made those comments last summer, frequently I would receive emails from some people who disagreed with me, because they would be like, "What are you talking about, World War II?" Well, I would point you all to the number of deaths this country has now experienced and compare those to World War II. The economic hurt our small businesses and our people are experiencing. If we did not have a social safety net right now, I want you to imagine those photos we've seen of people standing or waiting in cars for food. I want you to imagine how much longer those lines would be, how much more despair there would be in this country, how much more depression would exist. In fact, while I was sitting on this horseshoe today, I received a news notification from National Public Radio saying that suicide has actually risen and fears of it during this depression, which I guess we're not calling it that, but let's be real with each other. So I just want to also say that I saw a counter offer from congressional Republicans yesterday. And this is important for Oklahoma City to hear. That counter offer, President Biden, 1.9, the counter offer 600 million, or billion, whatever it was, something smaller. They purposely removed financial relief for municipalities and state governments. They purposely removed that from the conversation. As I've spoken about previously here on this horseshoe, when the 2009, 2008 economic crisis hit us, and we lost as much revenue as we did, when the state lost as much revenue as it did, it had to cut public education, my employment, our children's futures, our families' promise to their kids that their lives will be better than their present. We did not really restore those cuts back then, and y'all remember what that led to, the 2018 historic teacher walkout. If we do not meet this moment and invest in the lost revenue our cities and states are experiencing, I will see you all again in a decade, walking with those teachers. Also, please know that women are disproportionately affected by this, whether it is jobs related to daycare, whether it is the fact that a lot of women serve honorably as teachers, K through 12. And when we are missing that funding, we are missing jobs, and we are keeping people out of the workforce, specifically women, who lose their skills. So I would encourage everybody to reach out to their congressional delegation representative and make sure that they are saying that there is no bill too big, actually, right now to meet this moment. Because also remember 2008 and '09, and I do, because I was in grad school, there were economists telling President Obama then at the time to go bigger than that stimulus check that he passed. And he did not. And he did not because there was this notion of bipartisanship. He had to get some Republicans to vote for that bill with him. Let me tell you what bipartisanship is. Bipartisanship is supporting popular legislation and policies that Americans support across the board, whether they're Democrats, independents, or Republicans. That is bipartisanship. That is bipartisanship. And right now, poll after poll after poll says the American people believe that economic relief and further investment in our people, in our cities, in our states, is exactly what we need to do to make sure that we are not waiting until 2025 to see our employment numbers actually reach their potential. Our people are suffering right now, and I would encourage everybody to reach out. And let me tell you one little thing, Oklahoma City, about why they won't put that money in there. Because it's rhetoric. They will say that it's the, quote, "blue state bailout", that we cannot give money to municipalities and state governments who have acted irresponsibly with their funds through the years. Spoiler, everybody, Oklahoma City balances its budget. We invest in ourselves with MAPS 4, with MAPS 3, MAPS for Kids, MAPS. We are fiscally responsible as a city. And our federal counterparts have a duty and obligation to complement our work. Because the other consequence of that 2008, 2009 moment, where that recession hit us as hard as it did, was it delayed the implementation of MAPS 3 projects. There is a reason why the Scissor Tail Park or the Convention Center are finding their way finished right now. What will happen with MAPS 4? And what will happen with MAPS 4 when mental health as a project is something the voters championed, they approved? How long will it take before we actually get to implement some of those projects in there, like mental health? If I'm speaking at length about this, it is because we must speak at length about this issue. And this anti-government mentality that has so long taken hold of our state, that's got to go. That has got to go, because we are the government. It is our hard-earned tax dollars, and it must go to every level of government so that we can reinvest it back in our people and right this ship. So that's that on the economy. And again, that was the New York Times reporting from the Congressional Budget Office. Another note that I have here is actually from Hawaii Senator, Senator Schatz, who during the confirmation hearings for former Mayor Pete Buttigieg of South Bend, Indiana, his confirmation to become our next Transportation Secretary. I'm sorry, I watched all two and a half hours of that, because transit is just my transit, public transportation and public education, I love. I might speak at length up here, but I listen at length as well. And I listened to all two and a half hours of that, and I took some notes. And one of the things that stood out to me was when we heard Senator Schatz and Mayor Buttigieg discuss the importance of, quote, "It's very important to recognize the importance of roadways where pedestrians, bicycles, vehicles, any mode can coexist peacefully. And that complete streets vision will continue to enjoy support from me if confirmed," Mayor Buttigieg said. And so I just want to, I want the people of OKC to know that we have an incoming Transportation Secretary who does believe in streets for people again, and also believes that these different modes of transportation can coexist peacefully. So they have a partner with this council person, and anybody else who wants to work with me toward that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, do you have any comments? Thank you.
I'm good, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I do have a few things. First, I'd just like to say Happy Black History Month. I'm excited to hear, see, learn more from folks in the community about Oklahoma City's black history and opportunities to celebrate and recognize that. I'd also like to, I just recently learned about this opportunity and just kind of want to shout it from the heavens for, if anyone's watching that might want to take part in this or apply. The America Walks is an advocacy group for walkable communities, and they are about, well, I guess, as of yesterday, opened up their applications for their walking college, which is an annual distance learning forum. They pull together a cohort of walkability advocates from across the country and help kind of just do technical training about how to improve walkability in their neighborhood, city, et cetera. And I don't have time to do it this year, as much as I want to, especially, I think, to learn from other communities about what they're doing and be able to bring those ideas to Oklahoma City. But if there's anyone out there, I would love to have someone in Oklahoma City apply and participate. And even in a non-pandemic year, you know, it's a distance learning opportunity and an opportunity to make the ability to get out in our neighborhoods and exercise and get to the, just the daily needs of our day-to-day lives, more accessible for folks without cars or who want to forego their car every once in a while. I'd also like to just make a comment and maybe even pose a question. I know over the last month or so, the piece of our agenda that includes addressing the council has been changed a little bit, a few things have been added. And, you know, I think ever since my time on council, we've always explicitly, you know, communicated three-minute rule for folks that are coming to speak on items. Sometimes people go over, and the mayor might interrupt them and say, "Hey, you're at four minutes. Can you, you know, get to some concluding wrap-up thought?" And that's worked very well, and people have responded fairly well to that. And we've had countless, like, I don't even want to think about the number of yellow sheets of paper that we've had over the process of the MAPS 4 hearings, the MAPS approval meeting, and zoning cases, all sorts of things. But the fact that this additional item to, I guess, remind people that they can be removed for going over time feels a little pointed, given that we've just recently, in the last few months, had folks speaking, coming to speak on police brutality. And as far as eyewitness, they've all pretty much stayed within time. And if they've gone over, they've been interrupted, just as everyone else has, and said, "You're 30 seconds over. Can you please, you know, come to a conclusion?" And they've done that. And I just, I worry that adding this sort of language, and maybe has good intentions to remind people of that, but in my mind, it sort of is escalating or just putting information out there that flares tensions when we've really not had any problems. So I guess, part of me, I'm just very curious about when we decide to make these kinds of changes to these parts of the agenda, who has that decision-making authority, and what that process looks like. what that process looks like.
Sure. So the city manager has responsibility for the agenda. The clerk manages that on my behalf. We had this, we actually added this language about the time we came back into session in personal, in-person meetings. We had both COVID information that we put in there, the restrictions that were there, that was something we hadn't had before, because of what we had seen at some other meetings that had been happening where there was disruption going on in the meetings, we just wanted to clarify. It didn't change anything or set a rule. We just wanted to clarify that, look, if there's disruptive behavior, interrupting the meeting, not allowing us to do business, there are ramifications, there are consequences. And so that was all it was, was to try to communicate that because of what we had seen in other areas. When this agenda was posted, that was just an error, it was left out of the agenda. And so it was just corrected because it was something that we started some time back.
Well, I'll just add, I think, you know, I've watched other meetings happening at the county level, and the only times that I've, I know it's gotten maybe rowdy and disruptive, but the times in which there's been a response to, to sort of, in my mind, flex a little bit about the power that we have to remove someone, it's just gotten worse in those situations. So again, I just, this sort of reading this from even, you know, I think I saw this a few weeks ago, and I was just like, well, that feels a little pointed, just feels like an opportunity to flare those, that tension rather than, again, when we've not really had any issues here. So that's all I have. Thank you.
City manager, may I ask a question about, just kind of piggybacking on that? I've had people reach out to me about moving the, on the agenda, the citizens to be heard somewhere toward the beginning of the agenda, maybe even the items from council. I think of Councilman Stone Cypher's mask ordinance and how because the public was so engaged in that issue, we actually moved that conversation toward the beginning. And I just use that one as an example to say that, like, I don't know, maybe, I'm just very interested in, like, what public engagement is because, you know, sometimes maybe the zoning cases might take a really long time. I'm remembering the Penn Square one that might as well, we could have written a novel on that one last year, or, you know, 2019, it's all a blur. But, you know, sometimes the zoning cases might take a really long time, and maybe there was someone who came during the citizens to be heard or for that, but all of a sudden now it's, you know, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock. I can imagine someone right now going, well, Cooper, if you didn't talk as much, but you know what? No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it is, I'm gonna talk. And so, so who should everybody up here when you have something to say? So anyway, I'm just curious, like, how it is we ever even arrived at that idea of the very structure of the agenda? And moreover, is it possible to revisit that structure based on how other comparable cities of our size do it? And again, I'm just literally thinking about that citizen engagement part, like, if I knew a meeting was at 8:30 and I was a citizen, and somewhere toward the beginning was the citizens to be heard part, I know somewhere around 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, I'm going to be able to speak, and my workday or my children's day or whatever it is becomes a bit more manageable as opposed to like, oh, is it 1 o'clock? Is it 10:30? Is it, you know, I don't, just talking aloud here, it's just, but it's been something I've heard quite a bit. People have tagged me on social media about it.
Yeah. So I couldn't tell you the history of it as far as, like, when it came about, how it changed. I think the idea has been that to allow us to move ahead and conduct the business that we need to conduct as part of the meeting, which is, you know, the primary purpose of the meeting, but then still to allow for that citizen engagement that has typically been towards the end. As all of you all know, I think I've talked to several council members about the concept of possibly adjusting some of the schedule that we've looked at where we move some of the items, like items from council that are voted towards the front, city manager reports towards the front, because the meetings have been getting so long, we've gotten into where we're interfering with other public meetings that council members sometimes have to leave to go and participate in. So it's something that we've discussed, haven't looked at moving citizens to be heard to the front. I think, not in disrespect for the citizens, but recognition of the purpose of the meeting is to conduct the city business, but allow for that citizen engagement throughout the meeting. So it's kind of where we've been. We can certainly have conversations about what we might do in the future.
Yeah, I'd be curious. I'm just interested.
And I think as far, you know, to your point of other cities and what they do, I think it's all over the board. Most of them that I've looked at and seen typically is towards the end, but I think there are some that have it the front in other times.
Yeah. Mr. Vice Mayor, if I can just interject on kind of history, since I've been around for 39 years. We used to have citizens to be heard at the beginning of the agenda, and citizens complained because if they weren't here by 8:30, then they couldn't be heard. So we moved it to the end of the agenda so all the citizens would be able to be heard if they wanted to at the meeting. But of course, it is the city manager's agenda, and he can move it accordingly, but that's the history. That's why it was moved to the end, because citizens did complain if they weren't here by 8:30, then they couldn't be heard.
I do think this is something that we, as a council, could continue discussions and certainly need to have the mayor involved with it. So we'll just go on to the next councilwoman. Nice, thank you. Would you please share your comments?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Before I do my Black History Month education for everyone, I do want to say that the Omni, if you did not know, it opened on Tuesday, this past Tuesday, and I was afforded the opportunity to do a tour of this beautiful hotel. And if you have not seen it, just on the inside, just that ground floor, I promise you, you will be amazed just by the beautification of this facility and what it's bringing to our community and to our city, and the way that they were able to assist in just the pandemic of even their employees to ensure that they still had a place to work. So quite a few of them were able to relocate here, and we still have a lot of folks that are from our city that are also employed. So this was my, I hate to say this, this is my first time ever at an Omni to see one. I've always passed through Dallas and seen the big dome, so this is just extra special to say we have our own in Oklahoma City that is just for us and has been designed with Oklahoma City in mind. So I think in great detail, if you have not seen it, and how the rooms are named as Route 66, one of the ballrooms, another conference room is named Deep Deuce. So they took a lot of effort to ensure that it is labeled and it belongs to Oklahoma City. And the presidential suite, oh my. So I just got to see it. I probably won't get to stay, but I did get to see it.
The other thing, Nikki, when I took the tour, that I was so impressed was with local artists with local themes.
Yes, there's a lot of local art in there as well, and the different restaurants, and the other nice part of this is that the restaurants also face Scissor Tail, so it's open space and patio, so folks will be able to interact and engage with the hotel. So again, it's just, it's not just a hotel, it's actual spaces for placemaking for our city in that particular area of our community. I know Councilwoman Hammond didn't mention this, but I want to brag on her and her efforts with Local Progress. The two of us were able to attend Local Progress, was it 2019? 2019, the summer of 2019, and we learned a lot as far as local government and ways we can use our policy to assist our residents. And we both had studies that were placed in the Local Progress for this year, and it was the efforts for MAPS IV for neighborhoods, and also the efforts that we use with the Healthy Neighborhood Overlay District. So we are extremely excited that we're able to use the policy and the change that we're doing on this local level for others to see that it can be done in their municipalities as well. So I just want to congratulate you for your efforts in that study, and I hope you all will take a chance to read and read more about our efforts that we've done and how, how we have been able to brag on Oklahoma City by using this policy in this study for other places. I know the last meeting we had, I asked about the Scissor Tail as far as their CDC, and there was some money that was in our planning department that could possibly go to Tulsa, and I'm still waiting to hear back as far as what that looks like and why we aren't using those efforts to keep that money in Oklahoma City instead of allowing it to leave our city and benefiting other places if, in fact, we can use that for folks who need it the most right here. And we know there are plenty of folks who have said they need assistance when it comes to their business, when it comes to their just overall technical support, whatever their effort may be pertaining to their business. I do want to address, also, we had vaccinations last week in our community, and while we're grateful people were able to get vaccinated, it was not the best effort as far as how the process took place, and that's the unfortunate part, because we want everyone to be safe. It was very cold, and there were people waiting outside for hours to get vaccinated in different parts of our community. And there were quite a few emails and calls with feedback of how we do not want to do that again if we can avoid it. And I know there's a panic because everybody is nervous, one, that it's going to run out, two, they're going to miss their appointment, three, that they're just not going to have enough time to get there, or mobility issues. And I think that was the most important piece of it that made me nervous, was we had a lot of folks with mobility issues because it was for 65 and up, and they were in wheelchairs and walkers, and they couldn't stand for long periods of time. So it was, it was really difficult for some of them to even get to the appointment depending on the location, and it was difficult for them to navigate through the system because a lot of our seniors are, they just, they go, and a lot of times they just ask for that assistance, and sometimes you're expected to know what to do, and a lot of us don't if this is something new for us. So that was, that was just a piece of that, and I hope, I know the Health Department has acknowledged that this was not the best, the best work that they've done, and we are looking forward to better ways to serve our communities when it comes to our vaccinations in the coming weeks, especially for our seniors when it comes to that 65-plus population. So thank you all for your efforts in that, and especially for Oklahoma City County Health Department for their work, because I don't want it to make it be known that their work is not adequate or they are not going above and beyond. It just, this was just something, a one-off, that just was not the best day, but we are thankful that people still got vaccinated in the end. So hopefully, round two, when they get that, the second shot, it'll be a much better process. All right, now on to Black History Month. And I do want to, for our next meeting, hopefully we'll get a proclamation to acknowledge it. And the theme this year, if you did not know, there is an annual theme, and this is from the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, which was founded by Carter G. Woodson, who is the founder of Black History, and he founded Black History Week in 1926. And he chose the second week of February. The reason he chose the second week of February, because a lot of people say, why is it in February, the shortest month of the year? Well, there's a reason for that. He chose February, the second week because of two men who he said and believe were, they greatly influenced the black American population. One was Abraham Lincoln, whose birthday is on April the 12th, and also Frederick Douglass, whose birthday is, I said April, whose birthday is February the 14th. So February 12th and February the 14th. That is why he chose the, that particular week to celebrate Negro History Week. It wasn't until 1976 that Negro History Week became Black History Month. So that is why we celebrate the month every year. So there's a theme that comes from this organization, and the theme for 2021 is the Black Family: Representation, Identity, and Diversity. So just going to read one paragraph, and then I'm going to give you some, some local black history. "Not only are individual black families diasporic, but Africa and the diaspora itself have been long portrayed as the black family at large. While the role of the black family has been described by some as a microcosm of the entire race, its complexity as the foundation of African-American life and history can be seen in numerous debates over how to represent its meaning and typicality from a historical perspective, as slavery-free, as patriarchal or matriarchal, matrifocal, as single-headed or dual-headed household, as extended or nuclear, as fictive kin or blood lineage, as legal or common law, and as a black or interracial, et cetera. Variation appears as well in discussions on the nature and impact of parenting, childhood, marriage, gender, norms, sexuality, and incarceration. The family offers a rich tapestry of images for exploring the African-American past and present." So I actually think of the family, when I think of the black family, especially Oklahoma City, I reference a photo of Dr. Charles Atkins and Hannah Atkins at the depot with this, under a sign that said Negro Waiting Room, if I'm not mistaken. And he was our first African-American council member to serve in 1966, and she went on to become one of our first African-American women to serve our state legislature. So that, to me, defines black family. It defines the complexities, also the success of our black families. And also staying in our city structure, I want to first, though, on another note, congratulate Major Baldorama, who is now over our Spring Lake Division. But for Black History Month, this is our first piece, we want to congratulate our Deputy Chief, Ron Basie, who has become the third African-American Deputy Chief in our police history for Oklahoma City. And while this is a great accomplishment, we're still on single hands as far as counting the people in these types of spaces, when in fact, we should be well over us, single digits in congratulating and acknowledging and referencing. We also are under one hand for our executive leadership for our city when it comes to African-Americans. And that obviously doesn't speak to the diversity that we know belongs in our city structure. And also, I reference, and people, they go, wow, but while I say thank you for that, being number two as far as black women who have ever served our city council, and it's 2021. Again, one, we're two, we're three, we're these one-offs. So I know we can do better when it comes to the acknowledgement and promoting, being intentional about training, promoting, and walking through the process of what that looks like for our city. Because if our city wants to be that example, we have to do it if we want to see others do it. So I do want it, wanted to say that, and I think I am done for my Black History, and I'll be back next week.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, did you say you've been with us for 39 years?
Correct.
Is there any way we could talk you into another 39?
No.
Well, I look forward to working with Amy. When is your official last day on the horse shoot?
The 15th of February, that Monday, and Amy will be sworn in that afternoon on the 15th.
So on the 15th, we will get to sing your praises for your outstanding work that you've done for the city.
I believe the mayor's going to recognize me at the budget workshop next, on the 9th.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very briefly, Mark, your mic.
Very briefly, I'm sorry, Your Honor. I wanted to thank the council today for some activities that they approved. And the first one is the resolution accepting a donation from Peter Hoffman and his organization Wilderness Matters. This was to rehabilitate the Jim This was to rehabilitate the Jim Thorpe Courage Trail out at Martin Nature Park. And a few years ago, probably about three years ago, Wilderness Matters and Integris Hospital built this courage trail. And it is a wonderful trail. It's accessible for those with disabilities. And for Wilderness Matter to continue to oversee this and improve it, my hat's off to them, it's outstanding. But the one thing I wanted to say is, if you haven't been to Martin Nature Park, it's the number one attended park in Oklahoma City, and it has an incredible history behind it. The man that, that it's named after, Dr. J.T. Martin. He, in 1918, was called upon by the city to oversee and deal with a pandemic that was occurring in Oklahoma City. And, and Dr. J.T. Martin, although he taught at the University of Oklahoma, he was our first city physician, an office down below in the basement with a clinic. And so his love for parks was demonstrated by serving 20 years on the park board after he retired, nationally being involved with all park associations, and his relentless efforts to raise money in early 1960s to build this park through bond efforts and otherwise. The sad thing is, we acquired the land in 1963. It was named after the doctor in 19, I think, 67, something like that, after he was, after he had died, so he never knew the park was named after him. So, long story short, thank you Wilderness Matters. If you haven't been to the park recently, please attend. The second thing, and I'll be very brief, is that I want to thank Pastor Halls and Putnam City Baptist Church and this council for approving the real estate purchase agreement with the church to acquire additional land for the Senior Wellness Service, Senior Wellness Center, number one. Pre-pandemic, we had grown the facility, and this will help us with the gymnasium, and we had ran out of parking space, and this will help us have an additional parking lot out there. So thank you for the approval of these two measures today, council. Thank you.
Okay. Citizens to be heard, Garland Pruitt.
City manager reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. City manager report. Craig?
Yeah, so we, we have four city manager reports on in addition to claims and payroll. The only one I just wanted to mention, I don't have any presentations, but on sales tax, you'll see that we're about $13 million above target on sales and use tax, which has been, been very positive. The sales tax for the month of January was almost 4% growth. I would just note that there was a correction last year in January, which understated the January performance, and so if you factor that out, it'd be about 0.2% decline, which would be still flat, which is still better than what we've seen. So overall, we're about 4% decline on sales tax for the year. Still going to continue to monitor that as we go through the end of the year, and our targets are a little bit lower in the second half of the year. On use tax, it's still going very, very strong. We saw 28% growth overall, 13% growth for the year, so use tax has been, still been really strong, and that's all that I have.
I apologize. Thank you.
No, no, you're good.
Okay. Now, citizens to be heard, Garland Pruitt. Sarah Fana. Okay, those three, all that have signed up. Anything else? I guess we're adjourned. Where's the gavel? There we go. Okay. We are adjourned for the February 2nd, 2021 city council meeting. Thank you.